Good evening, everyone. I am Montgomery County Council President Gabe Albernós, and it is a pleasure to be with all of you as we continue hearing testimony regarding the FY23 budget. So this is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 proposed operating budgets in the FY23 through 28 Public Services Program and fiscal policy for Montgomery County Government, Montgomery College, Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, and Montgomery County Public Schools. Committee operating budget work sessions have already begun this week, and they will be followed by full council work sessions in May. We've heard very compelling testimony in our previous sessions, and we expect to hear more this evening. Happy to turn it over to Jordan Lindsay to help facilitate tonight's conversation. Just remind everybody that you have two minutes to speak this evening, and Jordan will help keep the clock. Jordan, turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much, Council President, and good evening and welcome to all our speakers this evening. I'm Jordan Lindsay. Now, as mentioned, each of you will have two minutes to provide your testimony, and we ask that you mute yourself when it's not your turn to provide your views. Tonight, the council has Marcela Rodriguez and Diane Lavoy on the Zoom broadcast for any residents who may need interpretation services from Spanish to English. Participants on the Zoom may also view Spanish captioning by selecting the closed captioning button at the bottom of their Zoom screens. This will be the button marked as CC in capital letters. Now, I'm going to go ahead and toss it over to Marcela to explain this. Marcela, to you.
Thank you, Jordan. Este programa se está traduciendo al español para los participantes en Zoom. Puede acceder a este recurso seleccionando el botón CC en la parte inferior de su pantalla de Zoom. Jordan, back to you.
Thank you, Marcela. Our first speaker tonight is Kathryn Katson. Please unmute your microphone, and you will have two minutes to provide your testimony when you are ready. Kathryn Katson. Okay, we can come back to you if you're not on here at the moment. Up next, we have Amsa Heck. Amsa, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready. Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Albernós, Vice President Glass, and County Council members. I'd like to thank each of you for your support and demonstrated commitment to EveryMind's suicide prevention and mental health services in Montgomery County during the last and many previous fiscal years. My name is Amsa Heck, and I am the Chief Development Officer at EveryMind. I am here to represent EveryMind's request that you approve the proposed funding in the county executive's budget for our hotline's transition to 988, and for the expansion of our mental health services across many areas of DHHS, such as homeless diversion and school-based mental health services, at the full amount. I also ask that you consider and adopt the proposed 10% inflationary increase across all nonprofit contracts. My parents were immigrants, moving to Montgomery County when I was barely born, for jobs at the NIH and in downtown DC. I grew up here, on the corner of Tildenwood Lane. My happiest memories were made here, and though we eventually moved away, it is my great honor to return to serve this county. When we returned, I was ecstatic that we might be able to raise our children here. Unfortunately, on a Colonel's salary and with no student debt, we still could not afford to move here and provide the quality of life that we wanted for our children. This is the same hardship that our skilled case managers, licensed social workers, and therapists face, often carrying large student loans. The county is losing a talented pool of specialized workers necessary to provide vital services for our residents. The Bureau of Labor Statistics states that demand for therapists will increase 23% by the end of the decade, social workers 12%. Salary for these professions has increased 20% in the last two years. This 4% increase to the county executive's proposed 6% is not about expanding services but about fairly paying our frontline teams and the staff that support them, so that we don't lose these talented workers to other counties. We won't get them back without spending significantly more taxpayer dollars. This 10% increase will ensure that we keep licensed and certified professionals who know how to combat depression, trauma, and suicide in our county. I urge you to find the $4 million additional dollars, the proposed increase, and if you can't, please approve the 6% and do not decrease it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Tiffany Jones. Tiffany, you have two minutes to give your testimony. You may begin when you are ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tiffany Jones, and I'm the Chair of the Montgomery County Community Action Board. I will be speaking with you about the needs of the Community Action Agency and the needs of the lower-income community. We appreciated the council's leadership in establishing an independent entity to oversee early care and education in the county, and we are thrilled that the new entity's board will include low-income parents. While we appreciate funding for six new school health nurses, we recognize that only some elementary schools have a dedicated nurse. We ask the council to allocate funds to ensure that every elementary school with Head Start and pre-K classes, including the newest classes being established through the blueprints funds, has its own dedicated nurse. This will help to ensure that Head Start and pre-K children continue to receive the same high-quality health services, screenings, and referrals, and will ensure that our Head Start program remains in compliance with all federal requirements. For our agency's VITA program, the logistical challenges of offering a hybrid model with an in-person and virtual free tax appointment led to fewer clients being served. However, the expansions for the EITC and CTC meant that VITA clients received almost $4 million in tax refunds and credits as of the first week of April. Please consider additional funding for the VITA partnership so that all sites can increase capacity and consider funding for contractors to assist in coordinating our tax credit campaign. Thank you for your leadership in ensuring funding for the WFIS so that it could remain at 100% match of the state EITC and include ITIN taxpayers. Community Action Tax Credit Outreach Campaign included bus signs 311 and MCPL digital monitor signs, staff training, media interviews, a bilingual text message campaign, an MCPS Quick Notes newsletter article, and a well-attended Facebook event in Spanish. Thank you to Council President Albernós for your participation as a panelist at this program. The Test Community Action Center is in the process of moving to a new location in Long Branch, and we hope to see you at our upcoming ribbon-cutting event. Thank you for your ongoing support for increased affordable housing and renters' rights. We ask that this issue remain a priority and that you explore every opportunity to expand affordable housing options. Lastly, we were excited to note that during these budget hearings, you have heard from several or will hear from several participants in our Board's Community Advocacy Institute, a free advocacy training program for low-income county residents. Participants focus their testimony.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but you're...
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Up first, next, we have to go back to the first person, Kathryn Katson. Looks like they've joined. Kathryn, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening. My name is Kathryn Katson, and I'm here to ask the council to please fund the Montgomery County Office of the People's Council. This office should be funded to ensure all of our residents have a voice. The Office of the People's Council previously played a critical role in zoning and text amendments by representing the interests of residents. Now it has no staff after being defunded by the council. Before the Office of the People's Council was defunded, residents had a voice for promoting a full and fair presentation of relevant issues in administrative proceedings in order to achieve balanced records upon which land use decisions can be made. Residents of Montgomery County no longer have that representation. The office has not been funded since 2010 despite written requests and public testimony to do so. The last 22 months of pandemic constraints on resident participation in their government have provided clear evidence of just how much a people's council would benefit all levels of government. County Executive Mark Elrich, responding to residents' requests, has proposed $225,000 in funding for the Office of the People's Council in his budget proposal for the coming fiscal year. Now it's time for the council members to please vote to include that full amount of money in the actual budget for next year. Fully funding the office will ensure that residents are adequately represented when critical issues come before our decision-makers. A fully funded legal voice for all residents is essential. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Janelle Wong. Janelle, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you so much. My name is Janelle Wong, and I moved to this county 10 years ago. I am a political scientist at the University of Maryland and have taught classes on politics for more than 20 years in Los Angeles, Seattle, and other places. But it was not until I became a resident of Montgomery County that I got involved in local politics. I was compelled to get more focused on local politics when I heard that students in our district were calling for more institutional efforts to address racial integration and racial inequality in our schools, and this unique role compelled me to join the NAACP Parents Council at my local school and to work with other Asian-American parents to support these students' efforts. And that is why I support the Black and Brown Coalition's priorities and call for a budget with students at the center. In the wake of decades of racial disparities in our county and a pandemic that has had unequal impact across racial groups, the county has a special role to request that MCPS provide a transparent budget that ties staff and spending to student outcomes. If cuts are required in the future, this also means funds and resources devoted to students and populations with the greatest needs must be protected. I also want to underscore support for the Maryland Blueprint for Education and the need to institutionalize and support a diverse and effective teaching force in our high-impact schools. A devoted cadre of teachers is already working in these schools, and we need to enhance and incentivize even more highly experienced and effective teachers and leaders with proven track records in these schools. We know there are stark inequalities that directly impact the experiences and outcomes of Black, Brown, and low-income Asian-Americans in our county. The bottom line is, I stand with the NAACP Parents Council and Black and Brown Coalition to urge the county council to hold MCPS accountable for assigning resources to students with the greatest need. I am here as an individual, but I am also part of the Black and Brown Coalition. Many faces, one goal.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Derek Owens. Derek, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Albernós, Vice President Glass, and other members of the Montgomery County Community Council for allowing me to speak this evening. You have a copy of my written testimony for the record already. I'm Derek Owens. I'm Board President of Mid-County United Ministries, MOM. MOM is an independent, non-denominational, and nonprofit organization that's been around since 1996 and relies on donations from entities from across the board, including Montgomery County Government, individuals, churches, and private businesses. We are an EAC, an Emergency Assistant Coalition member, serving the codes of 20902, 20906, 20853, 20859, and 20896. Our mission is to help people in crisis with food, medicine, eviction prevention, and utility shut-off assistance. So I want to thank you all for all the assistance that you've provided MOM over the past several years, especially during COVID. MOM supports an inflationary increase for all nonprofit contracts. The county exec's proposal of 6% is a good start, but MOM would prefer 10%, as advocated by nonprofit Montgomery, and MOM is a member of that organization. Costs of goods and services have skyrocketed, and an increase above the current level of inflation, which is currently 7.9%, would allow MOM to take full advantage of its limited resources. For instance, the cost of food has gone up dramatically, as you're well aware. We provide, at times, eggs for many of the folks who come to our food pantry, and eggs are up 30%. Macaroni and cheese is another staple. We went from basically $13.20 for a box, 24 boxes of mac and cheese, to $66 for 35 boxes. So you can see the costs have gone up, and we believe the inflationary increase will help us cover those costs and be able to provide food to more of our clients. We also receive utility grant assistance from the county, as well as an EAC member, and, as you probably are aware, we're seeing more and more individuals come who need help with their utilities to not have them shut off, but also to help them with their evictions. MOM supports the establishment, establishing the Office of Food Resiliency. Food insecurity and food inequality are real concerns within our county. MOM was fortunate to have started a mobile pantry back in 2016, which ran in conjunction with our office food pantry, which was a choice pantry.
Derek, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but your two minutes is up. Thank you so much for your testimony. If you want to provide this as a written testimony as well, that's also an option.
I've done that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Up next, we have Vanessa Gonzalez, who will be giving...
Vanessa Gonzalez puede dar su testimonio? Vanessa, perfecto. Yo seré la intérprete, por favor, de su testimonio. Puede quitar el mudo de su computadora para que se puede oír. Creo que está todavía en mudo.
Sí, buenas noches.
Perfecto.
Puedo iniciar ahora?
Sí, pido que lo haga párrafo por párrafo o idea por idea. Eso me permite traducir para que todos los concejales lo entiendan, ¿ok?
Está bien. Bien. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Vanessa. Soy residente del Condado de Montgomery. Agradezco la oportunidad de presentar mi testimonio esta noche. Soy madre soltera y tuve un problema de salud. Yo no sabía dónde acudir. En esos días participe en una reunión de la Oficina Internacional de las Escuelas de El Condado de Montgomery. En esa reunión, varias organizaciones que ayudan a la comunidad latina presentaron sus servicios. Yo expresé la necesidad que tenía de hacerme una mamografía, ya que padecía de un dolor muy fuerte en el pecho derecho. Ya luego, pues, la organización Identity, a través del programa Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar, me conectaron con una clínica comunitaria y pude realizarme la mamografía. Y mi chequeo físico también me facilitaron el transporte para las médicas. En ese momento que no encontraba bien de salud, mis ingresos se vieron reducidos por la pandemia también del COVID. Estaba desesperada, y por nuestra salud y bienestar, me ayudó financieramente con comida y ropa de invierno para mi hijo y para mí. Además, me ayudó... Paré por allá para que yo pueda interpretar lo que usted ha dado, ¿ok?
Sorry. I'm interpreting what she's given so far. Good evening. My name is Vanessa Gonzalez. I am a resident of the county. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to testify. I'm a single mother, and I had a health problem, and I didn't know where to turn. I participated in a meeting of the International Office of Montgomery County Public Schools. In that meeting, several organizations that helped the Latino community presented their services. I said I needed a mammogram, since I was in severe pain and I was very worried that I didn't, and I didn't know where to go. An organization called Identity, through the Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar program, connected me with a community clinic, and I was able to have my mammogram and my physical checkup. They also provided transportation to my medical appointment. At that time, I was not in good health. My income was reduced due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and I was desperate. And Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar helped me financially with food and winter clothes for my son and myself. Por favor, siga. Please continue.
Ajá. Sí, también me ayudaron a... Me proporcionaron una computadora y me ayudaron para inscribirme en un curso de inglés gratuito y también una... pues, me ayudaron en eso. Yo estoy dando mi testimonio para que el programa de Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar continúe, porque así como lo que a mí me sucedió, ¿verdad?, a muchas mujeres de nuestra comunidad, pues, les pasa y no saben a dónde acudir y no saben que hay ayuda, pues. Entonces, para nosotros es fácil, porque nos ayudan con el idioma y atienden nuestras angustias. Además, también, pues, además de que nos ayudan, nos guían, pues, y nos ayudan, ¿verdad? Nos ayudan a conseguir la asistencia. También nos dan las herramientas necesarias para empoderarnos e integrarnos más fácilmente. Muchas gracias.
Also, they helped me sign up for free English classes, and they got me a computer, so I could have my English classes virtually. I'm giving this testimony so that Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar program continues, since there are many women who, like me, don't know where to turn, and they help in our language and understand, they help us in our language and understand our anguish. Also, I would like to continue to count on them, because they not only guide us and help us get assistance, but they also give us the necessary tools to empower ourselves and integrate more easily. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Michael Larkin. Michael, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the county council. I really do appreciate your time tonight. My name is Michael Larkin, and I'm a resident of Silver Spring. Montgomery County faces two multigenerational and interconnected problems: addressing racial and social equity and combating the climate crisis. Our budget should reflect these as priorities and try to have an impact on people's day-to-day lives. Efforts such as creating the office that will direct food system resilience is definitely a step in the direction of affecting people's daily lives by taking us from food security to food sovereignty. One particular area in the budget I really want to focus on, on affecting people's daily lives, is transit. Our public transportation system is a lifeline to essential workers, who we came to all know their importance during the pandemic. This is why I think the free fares should at least be extended until the write-on study reimagined is completed. Free fares has a direct impact on equity, and especially in the context of rising prices, especially food, the program should continue. I, myself, witnessed firsthand how important the bus system is, not just as being a user, but I also had the privilege of working with other election volunteers in 2020 who depended on the bus to get back and forth to a poll center. But free fares by themselves in isolation is not enough. We must fully fund the write-ons plan to get back to full pre-pandemic service and plan for additional service that increases frequency and reliability. Workers that live paycheck to paycheck are the ones who suffer the most when the bus takes forever to arrive, and it will not attract the choice riders that we need to get vehicle miles per car down so we can take on the problem of climate change. And reliability also means fulfilling the promise made back in 2013 to build a real BRT system with dedicated lanes that people can rely on for their professional and personal lives. People should be able to access the needs of their life, whether they're able to afford the cost of a car or not, whether it's to get to a job, get to their school at a Montgomery County Community College campus, which I hope you fully fund their requests, or get to a park, which I also hope you fully fund the parks requests as well.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but...
I just finished. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you so much for your testimony. Up next, we have James Salisbury. James, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, county council, for letting me speak here tonight. I really appreciate this opportunity. It's great to hear everyone speaking about all these tremendous causes, and they all sound very worthwhile, and I'm going to speak about an additional one. I'm going to testify in support of full funding for the Parks Department's FY23 operating budget. My family and I moved to Montgomery County from Tennessee in 2017, and we've thoroughly enjoyed the county's parks and the programs they offer since we moved here. I'm not sure that the people who've lived in Montgomery County their whole life really can appreciate just how wonderful the Parks Department, the programs they offer are, or what it's like to live in a place where you don't have that type of programs and potential opportunities for recreation. So please, don't take this wonderful program and this wonderful opportunities that you have, please don't take them for granted. And this is especially true for programs for individuals with special needs. My son is 16 years old, and he's autistic, and he's been able to participate in a number of the county's parks programs that would not be available in other places. I know, because, as I say, coming from Tennessee, these types of things just weren't available, and they're not available in a lot of places outside of Montgomery County. And he's particularly enjoyed the Acing Autism Program. It's a tennis program at Wheaton Regional Park. So without full funding, the Parks Department won't be able to continue providing these excellent programs and these excellent services. It'll have to reduce its spending on the maintenance of infrastructure, especially ball fields, tennis and basketball courts, and hard-surface trails, and as well as cutting back on hugely important programs for special-needs individuals like the Acing Autism Program I mentioned. So in a time when Montgomery County residents have come to rely on the parks more than ever to get out and get exercise and socialize in the time of the pandemic, our parks need more resources, not less. So please, vote to fully restore funding for the Parks Department that's needed to maintain this wonderful system and all the programs they offer. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's been great to hear all these wonderful causes, and I really do appreciate all the work you're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Karen Kinser. Karen, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Karen Kinser. I'm the Chair of the Countywide Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. I'm here tonight to express thanks and support for the county executive's funding of the Recreation Department and to ask you to support his proposed budget. Over the last few years, we've seen the department do its best with inadequate funding. While the efforts have been strong, the board has heard from community members that the results have been lacking. This budget seems to write inadequate funding in several areas, most importantly in staffing. Communities have asked for staff to allow increased and location-specific programming designed to target those most in need, and this budget responds by providing for new community liaison specialists and for conversion of numerous program coordinators from part to full-time. This council has promoted programs to address access and participation in sports and recreation for girls and for all children in low-income neighborhoods, and this budget recognizes that those initiatives need to be supported by staff to execute them and also by funding positions to assist with things like communications, HR, and administrative support. The executive's budget will allow the Recreation Department to provide a strong infrastructure to a vast array of programs, and will allow important goals surrounding equity to be met. Our citizens deserve a Recreation Department that is running at full speed, and we hope you'll support the proposed funding. Complementing our Recreation Department are our parks, a true source of respite and peace for so many during the pandemic. With the return of sports events and rentals at civilian facilities and parks, our uses of park facilities is at an all-time high. We hope you will support the proposed funding of our Parks Department so that they can continue to maintain and improve our park system for the enjoyment of all county residents. We've heard so much recently from members of the community about how important these services are. We hope you'll support the proposed funding. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Theodora Scorato. Theodora, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening. I urge the council to consider amendments to fund a project that evaluates the climate impacts as well as the equity and environmental justice issues of the county's planned 5G deployment. Climate experts have published numerous studies on the proliferation of 5G and 4G antennas in combination with a tsunami of smart 5G devices, showing that the new networks will increase, not decrease, energy consumption, increasing greenhouse gas emissions. The proliferation of wireless networks is an environmental justice issue, not only because of the reality that climate change disproportionately affects our most vulnerable communities, but also because of the longstanding inequities of our healthcare system, as 5G will increase radio frequency radiation, considered by hundreds of scientists to be harmful to health. Now, already, the school cell towers are concentrated on schools with higher-minority students. Cell towers are being put up in front of apartments, and renters are not only not being informed, but they're left out of the decision-making process altogether. Property values will also be disproportionately affected. With new 30-foot cell tower setbacks, those who live in more modest homes will have a transmitting cell tower right in front of their home, whereas, if you have a large front yard with lots of trees, those antennas will be much further away. Twelve climate groups requested a climate and racial equity, social justice statement on the implications of the county's new rules that fast-tracks cell towers 30 feet from homes, yet no action was ever taken. 5G is promoted as helping with climate and solving the digital divide, but that is misleading greenwashing and false marketing. What people need is affordable broadband, not new expensive 5G devices, and a 2020 government accountability report on 5G specifically states, and I quote, "5G deployment will likely exacerbate disparities in access to telecommunications services known as the digital divide," page three of the 2020 JO report. Our community deserves an evaluation to ensure technology is earth-sustaining and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Tanaya Oella. Tanaya will be giving a testimony in Spanish. You have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Señora Tanaya, ¿nos escucha? Bueno, tiene dos minutos para dar su testimonio. Le pido, por favor, que lo diga completo, y al final yo voy a interpretar, ¿ok?
Ok. Hola, buenas tardes a todos. Gracias por la oportunidad. Mi nombre es Tanaya Oella. Mi familia y yo somos residentes del Condado de Montgomery. Mi familia y yo nos enfermamos de COVID. En ese momento, no podíamos trabajar ni salir a comprar comida. Estábamos desesperados, ya que no sabíamos a quién acudir. En ese momento tan difícil que estábamos pasando, contacté a Identity para solicitar ayuda. Identity, a través del programa Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar, nos conectó con los bancos de comida del condado para que nos llevaran comida a la casa. Además, el manejador del caso de Identity hizo una lista de las cosas que necesitábamos, y nos la dejaron en la puerta de nuestra casa. Mi esposo no pudo trabajar. Es en... Mi esposo no pudo trabajar ese mes, que estuvo enfermo de COVID, y nos atrasamos con el pago de la renta. El programa de Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar de Identity nos ayudó a conseguir el dinero para pagar la renta de ese mes. Yo estaba embarazada y necesitaba todo lo básico para mi bebé. Ellos me consiguieron la cuna, cía para el auto, coche de bebé, ropa y pañales. Absolutamente todo es lo que necesitaba para el bebé. Además, me consiguieron ropa para mi otro hijo y ropa de embarazada para mí. Además, quiero decir que Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar también ayudó a dos amigos que viven en nuestra casa. A ellos les ayudaron con comida, ropa, muebles, y a registrarlos en clases de inglés gratis. Nosotros estamos muy agradecidos con el programa de Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar, ya que nos ayudaron durante la pandemia que aún no se va. Quisiéramos pedirles que continúen el programa de Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar, ya que, como nosotros, muchas familias latinas necesitan un lugar donde acudir, que nos conecten, guíen, y colaboren para poder usar diferentes recursos que existen en el condado de Montgomery. Gracias.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Tanaya Oyuela. My family and I are residents of Montgomery County. My family and I tested positive for COVID-19. During that time, we could not work or go to buy food. We were desperate, and we didn't know where to ask for help. During that time, that very difficult time, we contacted the organization Identity to ask for assistance. Identity, through that initiative, Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar, connected us with the county's food banks so that they could deliver food to our homes. Also, an identity case manager made a list of the things that we needed and would kindly take them to our house. My husband was unable to work during the month that he was sick with COVID-19, and we fell behind with our rent payments. The Initiative Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar helped us get the funds to pay the rent for that month. As well, I was pregnant and needed all the basic necessities for my baby. They got me the crib, the car seat, stroller, clothes, and diapers. It was absolutely everything that I needed. Also, they got me clothes for my other son and maternity clothes for me. Also, I want to say that Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar also helped two of my friends who live in our house. They helped them with food, clothes, furniture, and they also helped them register for free English classes. We are very grateful to the Initiative Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar since they helped us during the most difficult times and during this ongoing pandemic. We would like to ask you to continue the Initiative Por Nuestra Salud y Bienestar since, like us, many Latino families need a place to go to connect them and guide them to the different resources that Montgomery County has available for its residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Julie Yang. Julie, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julie Yang. I am a MCPs parent, education advocate, and a candidate for the Montgomery County Board of Education. I'm here to call attention to critical resources needed to support the well-being of children impacted by the pandemic. I applaud the council for including in its proposed budget, one, a new wellness center at a Kennedy High School, two, expansion of mental health services at ten of the highest-neat high schools, and adding linkage to learning sites, three, essential supports to connect our residents with suicide prevention and mental health crisis services through the 989 line. However, more needs to be done. We need to take into account two areas of improvement. First, we must improve the unrealistic student counselor ratio in our schools. At our elementary school, the counselor-to-student ratio is currently at one to five hundred or more. This is problematic when we have increased needs. Therefore, we need to gradually phase in more counselors to serve our students in the school buildings. Secondly, let's improve the student school psychologist ratio in our schools. It is projected that MCPs will have twenty-eight school psychologists vacancies in the 2022 to 2023 school year. While some MCPs children will receive direct services from the newly hired school-based social workers, thank you, council, social workers will not be school-based at the middle, elementary, and preschool levels. This means fewer opportunities for mental health support for these levels with the projected vacancies I mentioned. These call for an overall evaluation of hiring practices and potential county incentives for mental health workers. I call on this council to not only put mental health a priority at this time of crisis, but to have consistent investment in the well-being of our community for the years to come. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Yessenia Lolasco. Yessenia, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Hi, good evening, County Council. My name is Yessenia, and I am a Montgomery County resident, and I also work for Montgomery County as a contractor. And most importantly, I am a parent to a child. Today, I'm requesting the creation or restructuring of current programs to also support and include single-parent households that consist of one adult, one child. The forgotten population is what I like to call them. Most of the current programs really only center to those who are low or extremely low-income households and leaves out and forgets about the single-parent households of one adult, one child, who may not qualify because they go over the income eligibility by five or 10%. Child care programs, thankfully, I've qualified for and have been allowed to and maintain a full job, but they are almost always adjusting to allow households to be eligible. Montgomery County is one of the most expensive counties to live in, and there still aren't sufficient resources out there to allow a large number of single households like myself to be self-sufficient with the most principal everyday need, affordable housing and food. Now, we're not asking for free living or free food at all. What we're asking is for the help to be able to be independent and to be provided with the assistance that we as Montgomery County residents support to every day, to be able to provide to our children a more stable, stress-free, sustainable, and self-sufficient living. In your self-sufficiency report, it shows a household of one adult and two children. In order to be self-sufficient in Montgomery County, the annual salary is eighty-six thousand five hundred and eighty. I'm nowhere near that, but yet I still fall through the cracks with these programs. Allocation of funds can and should be done to help this forgotten population. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Sonja Roberts. We got word that Sonja might not be here, but we'll call her name just for the record. Sonja? Okay, I'll note that. Up next is Lawrence Couch. Lawrence, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of the fiscal year 23 operating budget. My name is Larry Couch, and I co-chair the Justice and Nancy Council of Montgomery County, which collaborates with the Catholic Charities of Washington to advocate for the needs of poor and vulnerable people at the county level. The Justice and Nancy Council supports efforts to increase housing that is affordable for those fifty percent or below the area median income, including funding for the Montgomery Housing Initiative Operating Budget, a new naturally occurring affordable housing fund project, more rapid rehousing slots, and money to increase the maximum rental assistance subsidies. We urge that even more be done to relieve the heavy burden that housing costs have on the lower-income residents of our county. We support funding for the creation of the Office of Food System Resilience and enhanced grant funding for food assistance programs. Catholic social teaching holds that we are one human family, whatever our national racial or economic differences. Therefore, we strongly endorse the five-point-five-million-hours program to support newly arriving migrant and asylum-seeking children and families. The adequacy of and access to mental health services even before the pandemic was far below what it needed to be. And the pandemic increased this crisis. We support the budgeted funding for more suicide prevention and mental health crisis services, including expanding mental health support services in the high schools and among fire and rescue personnel. Further, we urge the County Council and the county executive to consider more far-reaching expansion efforts to provide adequate mental health services for all county residents and to eliminate barriers to access of those services. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Gisela Lopez. We got word that Gisela might not be here. Gisela? If you're here? Okay, I'll go ahead and note that as well. Up next, we have Robert Vega. Robert, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Yes, good evening, Council. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. I am representing the Silver Spring Justice Coalition. We support the proposed operating budget with favorable amendments. We have three tonight. Number one, we reject the creation of the Community Resource Bureau. Montgomery Police Department has not documented what public safety problems this expenditure, five-point-five million, intends to solve. It seems to be a bureau that's a marketing team of thirty-nine people to promote the image of the department. In addition, neither the reimagining Public Safety Task Force nor the ELE for a preliminary audit recommends the development of such an entity in the MCPD. Programs such as the Police Advisory Commission, the evolving Police Economy Board, the Administrative Charging Committee are better investments in improving community relationships with police. Also, we reiterate that the effective top department leadership is responsible for building positive relationships with the communities. Instead, there's been a widening gap with recent deaths, violence, murders of young, innocent black men such as Riley LaRue, Camino Akran, Fana Berhe, and Robert White. And we also, finally on this matter, object to any budget I in that perpetuates militarized police culture such as firing rage upgrades for pepperball guns and surveillance tools. Number two, we support the expansion of a robust behavioral healthcare and first-response system. With the advent of the 988 crisis coming this summer, we'll need expansion of mobile crisis units. I'll need another speaker to talk to that matter. And number three, provide all Montgomery Conspuse's wellness centers. We congratulate that all high schools are now receiving that, but we're asking a twelve-million-dollar expansion to include the forty middle schools as announced a prevention worth upon a cure in closing. Budgets are more than fiscal operations. They are moral documents that reflect the beliefs and values of the community. This is the time to build people up rather than programs that expand the bureaucracy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Allison Jacobus. Allison, you have two minutes to give your testimony. You may begin when you are ready.
Good evening. My name is Allison Jacobus, and I am a MCPs school psychologist at Rolling Terrace Elementary, North Chevy Chase Elementary, and Silver Creek Middle School. Currently, I am the only school psychologist for one thousand seven hundred and sixty students. I have been a school psychologist in MCPs for nine years. I'm also the parent of a child who will attend MCPs when he is older. I am passionate about my career in school psychology because I believe my calling is to provide mental health services to children. In my years in MCPs, I have managed to provide group and individual counseling to children in every building I have worked in, despite having a student ratio that is more than three times the nationally recommended ratio of one to five hundred students. My ability to expand my capacity to provide mental health services is threatened by MCPs's current inability to retain and recruit school psychologists. I had hoped that our staff-to-student ratios would improve over time, but our ability to provide direct services to students would increase. However, we are facing the prospect of twenty-eight open positions this fall, which will result in more schools being added to our caseloads and having our time with students decline significantly. The County Council has been supportive of school psychologists in the past, and I am grateful that the members prioritize providing direct mental health services to our students, who themselves have been advocating for more support. While it is my understanding there is nothing the council can currently act upon in the recommended MCPs budget on this issue, I am hopeful that your ongoing support in increasing the number of school psychologists in MCPs will lead to a positive outcome as MCPs enters into contract negotiations in the fall and in future budget proposals. We need to have a more competitive salary than our neighboring districts to attract and retain qualified candidates. We need more school psychologists to provide direct, face-to-face mental health services for our students, who deserve to have their mental well-being become the priority it should be. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Joyce Cabea. Joyce, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening, members of the Montgomery County Council. It is an honor to speak to you tonight. My name is Joyce Cabea, and I am a student senator at the Germantown Campus of Montgomery College. I'm here to ask that you support Montgomery College's operating budget request, which will keep tuition affordable for all students. I'm an early college student in the process of completing an associate's degree in computer science. In 2023, I will graduate with an MC and Wheaton High School and Wheaton High School with a college degree and a high school diploma at the same time. I plan to transfer to get a bachelor's degree then a master's degree in computer science. I hope to work as a software engineer at a major tech company like Google. With the jumpstart that MC has given me, I believe all of this can and will happen. I'm the child of two immigrants that moved to the United States from the Democratic Republic of Congo with nothing. My parents have gained more financial stability, but there are still struggles. Affordable tuition makes it possible for my older sister to attend MC at the same time that I'm pursuing my MC degree. I'm incredibly grateful. In addition to my family's need for affordable tuition, I know that many, many students need this too. I'm here to speak on behalf of my fellow Germantown campus students. Please help keep tuition affordable so students can attend MC no matter their financial situations. My time at the college excites me about the future. My peers and I are thankful because MC cares about helping us succeed. I know many students on my campus rely on MC as the place to get their college education. Students like my sister and I need a college close to home that they can afford. Thank you for supporting MC so it can keep tuition flat throughout this pandemic. With your support this year, the college can continue to keep tuition flat, so students will be able to earn a college degree that leads them to prosper in the future. We are grateful for your support of the legate math and science building on Tacoma Park Silver Spring campus, as well as a library renovation on the TPSS campus. Thank you for all that you have done for Montgomery College to help keep tuition affordable, which has allowed my sister and me and many others to pursue our passions and move toward success. Please support Montgomery College's operating budget so MC remains affordable. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Magda Ruby, who will be giving a testimony in Spanish. You have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening, Magda Ruby. Puede dar su testimonio en dos minutos? Yo estoy lista para interpretar. Si quiere darlo todo completo y luego yo lo interpretaré.
Okey. Bueno pues, buenas noches. Agradezco la oportunidad de estar aquí testificando ante ustedes para pedir un refuerzo de recursos que permitan trabajar en programas dedicados a prevenir la violencia en las escuelas secundarias de nuestra comunidad. Soy residente del condado y madre de un estudiante de secundaria. A través de mi familia y amigos y la comunidad he tenido la oportunidad de conocer situaciones de violencia escolar que afectan el desarrollo socioemocional de los niños. Por ejemplo, el caso de mi sobrino en lo cual en la escuela le pegaban y pellizcaban en su espalda y brazos y partes donde no se miraba. Este caso fue reportado ante las autoridades competentes, pero deja consecuencias y emociones que afectan el desarrollo de los niños. Urge programas variados que ofrecen a los jóvenes y niños, programas en los cuales se involucra los padres, tanto el niño que sufre violencia como el agresor. Muchas gracias. Espero tomar en cuenta nuestras peticiones.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for all those who are present. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, giving my testimony before you. I'm thanking, I'm asking you to increase funding for programs that are dedicated to preventing violence in schools in our community. I'm a county resident and the mother of a high school student. And through people who are close to me, my family and my community, I have learned of cases of school violence that affect the socioeconomic development of children. Such is the case of my nephew, who in his school was beaten and pinched and in places in the body that aren't visible, so that his mother did not notice. The abusers told him that if he told his mother, it would get worse. So he remained silent for a long time. So, his mother finally noticed that the child did not want to be seen in his underwear, and so he this was reported to the authorities. And even though it was reported to the appropriate authorities, the negative emotional consequences for this child have been serious. There is an urgent need for a variety of programs to be offered to young people, especially those who spend the day without supervision. Healthy recreation and workforce training. These programs must somehow include parents, and they offer parenting workshops and reunification workshops because we can't leave the responsibility entirely to the county. because we can't leave the responsibility entirely to the county. We understand that many issues of violence begin at home. Ways must be found to educate both children and parents and to prevent those increasing common situations by creating solutions that involve schools, parents, students, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Carl Smith. Carl, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Albernós, Vice President Glass, and other council members. My name is Carl Smith. I'm a professor of history and political science at Montgomery College. I'm here today as a representative of the Montgomery College chapter of AAUP. I came to Montgomery College in two thousand and four for the work, and I stayed for the remarkable students and the chance to be a part of an institution that shapes lives and is an essential part of the community. Stories of student maturity and development abound. Indeed, Joyce just gave us one. One such story I'm familiar with is a former student of mine who went from Montgomery College to UMBC to Virginia Commonwealth University, where she got her master's in genetic counseling and is now working at NIH. She and her husband recently bought a house in Bethesda. I can't tell you how energizing it is to see that kind of growth from a student taking one-hundred-level courses with nothing to a career professional contributing to the health of our community and the county tax base. I've also had a fellow student who served in the Montgomery County Police for several years. These successes are common among our students. Incidentally, I have lived in Montgomery County for about sixteen years. I am struck by the number of my neighbors who have taken classes at MC, couples who have met at MC, or family members studying at MC. I believe a few members of our council have also taken classes at MC. This kind of community reach is deep and transformative. All this success has not wavered in the face of the pandemic. On the contrary, I see all around me faculty, staff, and most importantly, students who show grit in the face of overwhelming difficulties due to COVID. I sincerely hope that the council will continue to support the college in the future and fully fund MC's fiscal year twenty-three operating budget and fund pay raises for AAUP members and all faculty and staff. With full funding, we can continue to be an instrument for achievement, growth, and personal success in Montgomery County. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Barbara Selter. Barbara, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Selter, and I am Chair of the Montgomery County Commission on Aging. The Commission on Aging appreciates that the county executive has included some much-needed funding to meet the needs of older adults in its current budget, and we urge you to vote to accept these proposed increases. Our top priorities include funding the expansion of in-home care to more older county residents, including those who do not qualify for state programs. Older adults overwhelmingly prefer to remain in their own homes. They and their families actively seek home and community-based services to avoid or postpone nursing home placement. Many older adults need HCBS but are not eligible for Medicaid. These older adults struggle to afford the support they need to allow them to remain safe, thrive in their homes, and prevent social isolation. The COA urges increases in funding to support them, especially through grant programs to fund nonprofits that provide in-home care. We also, our second priority, is to increase funding to help market or advertise services available for older adults. The county offers many services for older adult residents with a wide range of needs and abilities. However, many older adults are unaware of these valuable programs. Therefore, the COA requests dedicated funding to market and promote these services. The COA also requests assigned staffing to help communicate the many available services, such as a senior fellow for communications. The COA appreciates the council's commitment to serving our older residents. We have identified other items for which we will advocate during the budget cycle, including funding for a full-time facilitator for the age-friendly Montgomery Program, funding the Access Hears Pilot to help low-income older adults with hearing loss, restoring cuts to the escorted transportation program, and updating income eligibility limits for inflation, expanding funding for the Housing Initiative Fund, and incorporating design-for-life principles into new development.
Barbara, I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but your two minutes is up. Thank you so much for your testimony. You may provide a written testimony if needed. Thank you. Up next, we have Sonia De Leon, giving a testimony in Spanish. Sonia, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Señora Sonia, nos escucha?
Still escucho.
Perfecto. Este puede dar su testimonio. Tiene dos minutos. Cuando usted termine, yo voy a interpretar. Gracias.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sonia De Leon. Soy una residente del condado y mamá de tres niños. He logrado pre-kinders seis y once. Gracias por la oportunidad de poder expresarme como madre sobre la violencia en las escuelas y nuestra comunidad. Después del regreso a clases de manera presencial, se ha visto un alto aumento en el número de casos de violencia que se presentan en las escuelas y fuera de ellas, incluso en escuelas elementales. Es vital que los niños y jóvenes se mantengan ocupados y mejor aún mientras aprenden algún oficio o desarrollan alguna habilidad que los prepare para el futuro, pero sobre todo que los aleje del odio. Siempre hablo con otras mamás que me comparten sus frustraciones por no tener dinero para pagar programas de recreación para sus hijos, porque la mayoría son muy costosos. A mi hija y otras niñas latinas les gustaría aprender a hacer uñas o arreglar el cabello, entre otras cosas. Así igual los niños. Oficios que lo formen integralmente porque además de alejarlos de la violencia, aprenderían a cómo ganarse las cosas con esfuerzo. Tengo muchas amigas que tienen que trabajar mucho y sus hijos pasan mucho tiempo desocupados sin hacer nada y a veces sin supervisión de los padres. Entonces andan con sus amigos de un lado a otro hasta el punto de que uno de ellos fue apuñalado por andar con personas que no debía. Pues mi amiga me cuenta que sus hijos le dicen que los inscriban en cursos de mecánica, pero el presupuesto no le alcanza, y pues se siente triste por no tener la oportunidad de hacer algo más que la escuela. Quiero firmemente en la necesidad de gente de que se inviertan en más programas para después de escuela y sobre todo que sean accesibles para todos los niños, porque estoy completamente segura de que esto ayudaría a reducir esos índices de violencia, no solo en las escuelas intermedias, sino en todos los espacios. Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Sonia De Leon. I am a county resident and mother of three children in grades pre-kindergarten sixth and eleventh. Thank you for the opportunity to express myself tonight. Today, I want to testify in regards to violence in schools and in our community. After returning to the in-person learning, there has been a high increase in the numbers of cases of violence that occur in and outside of the schools, including elementary schools. It is crucial that children and young adults stay busy and that they also learn skills that prepares them for the future. I always talk to other mothers who share their frustrations about not having the resources to pay for recreational programs for their children, as most of them are awfully expensive. My daughter and many other Latina teenagers would like to learn how to do manicure or style hair, among other things. Boys would like to also be involved in other activities that will keep them away from violence. They would like to learn how to earn things with their own efforts. I have many friends who have to work many hours, and their children spend a lot of time without doing anything and in some cases without supervision. Then what they do is just hang out with friends without any productivity, to the point where one of them was stabbed for hanging out with the wrong people. My friend tells me that her children always ask her to enroll them in mechanic classes, but sadly, they do not have the funds available, and it makes them very sad for not having the opportunity to participate in other activities other than school. I strongly believe in the urgent need to invest in more after-school programs, especially to make them accessible to all children, because I am sure that that would help reduce those rates of violence, not only in school but in all spaces in our society. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next is Sarah Guerra. Sarah, you have two minutes to give your testimony. Sarah will be giving a testimony in Spanish. You may begin when you are ready. Thank you.
Señora Sarah, nos escucha? Sarah Guerra? Está ahí señora Sarah?
I don't think she's with us. Okay, she's not with us. I will go ahead and note that. Thank you. Up next is Michael Rubin. Michael, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready. Do we have Michael Rubin? Okay, I'll go ahead and note that. Up next is Zainab Abbas. Zainab, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening, council members. My name is Zainab Abbas, the CEO of SciTech2U. Since 2011, SciTech2U has offered students in K-12 STEAM education through experiential learning. Our students fly airplanes at the airpark in our aeronautics program, learning Bernoulli's Principle and the Four Forces of Flight. Our students make major gains in STEM and have fun. SciTech2U is unique. It is led by me, Black African-American Muslim female, and offers DEI. Students step into a professional atmosphere in our classroom. Students learn lab applications, safety, and notebook techniques. SciTech2U was founded on a mission to provide DEI in STEM. Most people heard of Food Desert, but not many know of STEM Desert. We provide access to quality, innovative STEAM education. SciTech2U students are diverse, including fifty-eight percent African-Americans, twenty-one percent Asian-Americans, and thirteen percent mixed other races. Approximately sixty-seven percent of our students live in families with income at or below two-hundred percent of federal poverty guidelines. Therefore, SciTech2U offers the program for free or low cost. We have served just over seven hundred students. SciTech2U students increase their knowledge by fifty-four percent in STEM. A recent survey indicates sixty-five percent of our students will pursue a career in STEM. Many organizations value and support us. Montgomery County Collaboration Council is a supportive partner. SciTech2U needs more funding to support communities like Scotland, Kangar, and countless others that are supposed to be STEM deserts. Just a week ago, I sat in the audience to discuss a resolution to violent crime in the DMV with our own council member, Jawando, and former police captain Sonia Pruitt. Dr. Middlemass from Howard University and Brookings Institute and others suggested that increasing funds for our out-of-school time program will help. So I asked, please direct funding that will support SciTech2U and similar organizations when finalizing the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Janet Brown. Janet, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready. Do we have Janet Brown here?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello. We can hear you.
Okay, good evening. My name is Jan Brown, and I live at nine-two-nine Bonafant Street in Silver Spring. I'm one of the thousands of residents who have benefited from the county's investment in affordable housing. I live in downtown Silver Spring at the Bonafant Senior Apartments, next door to the Silver Spring Library. The Bonafant was made possible thanks to the county's Housing Initiative Fund, and it also took advantage of the availability of county-owned land, which the county should do more often. I love living at the Bonafant because Montgomery Housing Partnership, MHP, cares about its residents. MHP keeps the building clean and attractive. The management team responds quickly to the resident needs, including the welfare of the residents. MHP allowed me to write a newsletter for my neighbors, which my neighbors found to be informative and fun. Affordable housing is important to me because my income is very low. Without affordable housing, I don't know where I would turn for housing. So for me, homelessness is not an option. I feel fortunate to have a safe and affordable home, but there are many other people in the county like me who struggle to find an affordable apartment and pay the rent. Everyone deserves to have the same opportunity that I have to live in a safe and affordable place. And I hope the council will provide funding over and above what the county executive has proposed so that more people like me can have a place to call home. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Christian Garcia. Christian will be giving a testimony in Spanish.
Cristian, estamos listo para que usted dé su testimonio, por favor? Nos escucha?
Hello. I can speak English if you guys want me to. It doesn't have to be Spanish or whatever.
I, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Perfect. Está bien.
Okay, so, good evening. My name is Christian Garcia. I am an eleventh base student at Clarkford High School. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you my concern about the lack of mental health service that we deliver to students today, which added to the lack of free and accessible recreation spaces for all. Leaves us in spaces increasingly full of violence. Many of my fellow students were affected in their mental and emotional health during the pandemic until now they have not had the necessary support. And the increasing violence and threats at school is making the situation worse. Many students need additional support. The last two years have been very difficult for everyone, but especially for students. So I ask you to create the necessary mental health service, but not as rigid and code as clinics. They can be linked to programs with recreation and trades. Those would be more effective, meaning the students, that we can surely help with the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Action Abadi. Action, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you very much. Good evening. President Albernós, Vice President Glass, honorable members of the county council. It's great to see you again, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Afshina Abadi, and I'm the immediate past president of the Maryland Association of Adult Day Services. We are very grateful to county executive for fully funding the medical daycare differential request for FY23, and we urge the council for your support in keeping this funding intact. This increase is essential to medical daycares being able to operate in the county and provide the care and support for our community's most vulnerable members. The past two years have been very challenging for medical daycares in the county and first having to adapt to closing the facility services and implementing remote services in order to keep our participants safe but not forgotten, and then to try to come back and restart all that process. And despite all of our efforts and the success with the vaccines, we're currently facing a significant reduction in the facility services, in facility attendance, as compared to pre-COVID attendance, which is making FY23 our most challenging year to date. Although the number of participants are gradually increasing, majority of medical daycares across the state are currently only operating at about sixty-five percent pre-COVID attendance. Many people are still scared of leaving the home and coming to the facility. Some have been lost to nursing homes. So this year in particular is a transient year that we really think we need the additional assistance with. While the fixed costs have increased significantly in our areas, not to mention the significant gap between the state and county labor. So we urge the council to support the FY22 ARPA funding allocation of one-point-two million dollars for qualified medical daycare programs in Montgomery County. Thank you very much for your time, and we can provide additional information as needed.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Stacy Brown. Stacy, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stacy Brown, and I'm
My name is Stacy Brown, and I'm the owner of Sinarama Silver Spring, located on Brookville Road in the Littlesville area. I also serve as a cap member for the Purple Line Project. I'm here tonight to testify in support of funding to provide business support services to small businesses impacted by Purple Line construction, including Littlesville. First, I want to sincerely thank the County Council and state delegates for all of the support provided so far to help businesses impacted by the Purple Line. It has not gone unnoticed. Several years ago, the council appropriated funding to provide marketing, business planning, and technical assistance to small businesses in the Purple Line corridor. However, it was limited to Long Branch and Bonafant Street businesses. We have observed the good work being done by MHP and LEDC to market those business districts and support small business owners, and believe they can have a similar impact in our area by helping to attract more potential customers and market the business district as a whole. I've personally worked with MHP in helping to market Long Branch and LEDC during the pandemic and can attest to the value that they provide. Construction activity has made the business district less pleasant to be in and at times less accessible, such as when the Littlesville Bridge was closed for reconstruction. That was extremely detrimental to the business community and has had a long-lasting residual effect. The small businesses here have been through so much and still can't see the light at the end of the tunnel when it comes to construction of the Purple Line. While direct grants to businesses are definitely helpful, they don't even begin to compensate for the actual loss of business. Small businesses also need the support of the county government, and the best way to do that is by providing service providers who've been doing this work with the resources to assist Littlesville business owners. We're busy running our businesses, so we really need people on the ground to help. We love being a part of the Littlesville community and want to be here long enough to see the Purple Line open. We urge the council to appropriate additional funding to enable these organizations to expand their services to Littlesville area businesses until construction on the Purple Line is complete. Thank you for your consideration and for the support of small businesses.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Paul Holmes. Paul, you have two minutes to give your testimony. You may begin when you are ready.
Good evening. I'm Paul Holmes, a longtime resident of Silver Spring. While Montgomery County is proud of its so-called progressive traditions, we also have a troubling racial history that includes three lynchings, segregated schools, lunch counters, and swimming pools, discriminatory housing practices, and police misconduct. Too often, our county actions have belied our progressive moniker, such as the case with aspects of the proposed budget for 2023. I want to register my position on three items that have deep racial equity and justice overtones. First, I strongly oppose the proposal for a new MCPD Community Resource Bureau. Yes to summer camps and increased opportunities for youth, but those are better run through our qualified organizations like the Recreation Department. The proposed bureau is not about increased opportunities for youth, but rather a costly and blatant sales job designed to launder and obscure police misconduct and MCPD's opposition to transparency and accountability. The proposal follows the same playbook that Marlborough and Virginia Slims used to sponsor sports and entertainment events in order to brighten their brand's images, even as their products were disabling people and killing them. Second, over the past two years, the county has made all too, um, an all-too-timid effort to expand use of the mobile crisis outreach teams, which assists those experiencing behavioral health issues. The county must redouble its efforts and provide 24/7 crisis team coverage for the whole county. Third, for years, this council and the Board of Education have known about the egregious need for student support services at MCPS. MCPS students are hurting right now and cannot wait years for the Wellness Center Plan. I ask you to support Councilmember Navarro's proposal to urgently upgrade those support services. We must do better to support the people of Montgomery County and really earn our progressive reputation. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Carleen Ponder. Carleen, you have two minutes to give your testimony. You may begin when you are ready.
Okay, yes. Hello, my name is Carleen Ponder, and I am testifying on behalf of the Mental Health Committee for the Silver Spring Justice Coalition. Um, in July 2022, the country will provide a national three-digit number, 988, as an alternative to 911 for calls involving mental health and substance abuse and other non-criminal issues. To provide a true alternative to 911 and thus reducing the role of law enforcement in healthcare delivery, we request the county budget that funds first responders who are most qualified to respond to crisis calls. This includes robust funding for mobile crisis teams, community deescalators, and peer supports, especially for people with disabilities and for youth. Currently, we have three mobile crisis teams that operate during the weekday, and one team operates during the evening and on weekend shifts. With this small amount of coverage, countywide crisis response cannot happen with certainty or speed. This leaves behavioral health needs to law enforcement, and it has resulted in the needless deaths of Black people in our country, like 21-year-old Ryan LaRue last year, who was killed in a hell of 23 bullets while sitting in his car in Gaithersburg. Um, LaRue was in a mental health crisis. Police have said that they, um, did not call crisis services because crisis services were not available at that time of the night. Um, while they did call a police negotiator, they actually didn't wait for that negotiator to arrive. They opened fire on, uh, LaRue when the negotiator said he was two minutes out. Nonetheless, um, we ask for essentially a doubling of the county's crisis services budget. Um, the fiscal year request for crisis services from the county was approximately $9.4 million. We think that an additional $9.1 million needs to be added in salaries to the current budget in order to achieve, um, yeah, 24/7 coverage for the whole county in terms of mobile crisis units. Um, that would include peer supports and others who can go out and, um, provide public safety without endangering our citizens, without killing people in a hell of 23 bullets, uh, when they were no threat to anyone. Um, and so we're asking that the county's 2023 budget requests a true commitment to public safety that is not solely defined as armed law enforcement. We've seen entirely too many Black people lose their lives at the hand of police in this county, which is reflective of the same type of police violence that we see nightly on the news across the nation. The county has an opportunity to change that by investing.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you. If you need to provide a written testimony, that's welcome as well. Thank you so much. Your two minutes is up. Thank you. Up next, we have Punyacha Zapameco. Punyacha, you have two minutes to give your testimony and you may begin when you are ready. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So, good evening, council members. My name is Pear, and I am the owner of Good Guys Thai Noodle on Bonifant Street. I am testifying in support of funding to maintain support service for small businesses impacted by the Purple Line construction. So the construction on Bonifant Street is a disturbance and menace. The street is one-way and the sidewalks are closed, so the parking is really limited, making delivery orders more difficult. The area is not very welcoming, and many customers are going elsewhere. So from my experience, I have many customers told me that your food is very good, and we feel like home may be dining in your restaurant, but we're not gonna come back until the construction finished. So, and the construction broke the water line two times, so we had to cross the restaurant because of that. We lost a lot of sales. We love being on Bonifant Street and want to see the Purple Line open, but the construction adds many challenges to us. Thankfully, we have our EDC and MHP have surveyed to attract more customers and help out with the loss of business. So they help us with the social media marketing, decide a menu. They will also help us for the sickness and patio improvement. Unfortunately, the restaurant is open only eight months, so we don't qualify any grant right now. But they will also help us for the grants and loan money. And the council have given MHP and LEDC funding for this survey, but the funding has been exhausted because it's assumed a 2022 opening for the Purple Line. So we are requesting additional funding for this organization so they can continue supporting us and others impacted by the construction. So thank you very much for your consideration and supporting for our small business.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Diana Godoy. We got word that Diana might not be with us this evening. Diana Godoy, just for the record.
Diana Godoy, está usted?
Okay, I'll go ahead and note that. Thank you. Up next, we have Carrie Kissicky. Carrie, you have two minutes to give your testimony and you may begin when you are ready. We have Carrie Kissicky. Okay, got word that she might not be here either. I'll go ahead and note that. Up next is Geneva Darmay. Geneva, you have two minutes to give your testimony and you may begin when you are ready. We have Geneva Darami here.
Yes, good evening. I'm here.
Hello.
Please let me know.
You may begin whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Thank you so much. Good evening, all council members, all Montgomery County and Maryland State Executives present. Special gratitude and recognition to all Community Action Institute, CAI members and participants. Special recognition and gratitude for all three committee members, council members, Planning, Housing and Economic Development Fed, Councilmember Hans Reimer, Councilmember Andrew Ferguson, Councilmember Will Jawando. My name is Jennifer Darami, and I take pride and give God the gratitude for giving our family the privilege to live peacefully and comfortably in Montgomery County for over 20 years. Special recognition and gratitude to our mother, Mrs. Abidat Daramijar II, for believing in Montgomery County housing and education system, which allowed my siblings and I to thrive and succeed after graduation from the newly renovated prestigious Seneca Valley High School. I am honored and feel absolutely privileged at the opportunity to be heard by you all this evening at the council budget here. Like many others in the county, I am grateful and in continued support and in favor of Bill 1820 in favor of rent increase freezes during COVID-19 emergency. Bill 1820, Public Health Measure to Stabilize Rental Housing During the Statewide Emergency that had been declared by Governor Larry Hogan on March 2020. Special thanks to Councilmember Will Jawando and the co-sponsors for initiating the necessary measures and advocating on behalf of all residents in Montgomery County. I am kindly requesting that the Fed Committee members strongly consider extending timeframe for when landlords can start rental increases for Montgomery County residents as proposed by Bill 1820 and/or creating another piece of legislation to extend Bill 1820 until we completely recover from the loss that the pandemic caused a lot of families in Montgomery County, despite the state of Maryland emergency being lifted. In addition, I am kindly requesting for a swift action on the budget allowance and extension on Phase 3 of the COVID-19 pandemic relief for all county residents who qualify. Please reconsider extending Bill 1820, rent increase relief, and Phase 3, final phase of the COVID rent relief support. Thank you once again for your time, and thank you in advance for all future proposals and favorable considerations on behalf of Montgomery County residents. Beyond CAI, I am passionate about community service and certainly working together with Montgomery County representatives, council members if possible, specifically with the Office of Councilmember Will Jawando, in helping in various ways as it relates to planning, housing, economic development, and education. When we empower residents in Montgomery County, we empower entire communities, nations, and the entire human family. Thank you, Jennifer Darami.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Agar Beyanda. Agar, you have two minutes to give your testimony and you may begin when you are ready.
Thank you, Jordan. Can you open my video, please?
We hear you. We will work on your video in the meantime, but you can go ahead and start. We will definitely work on that video getting on for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Agar Beyanda with Mana Food Center. Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. We can hear you. Go ahead. No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Mana's vision is a community where all people at all, oh, sorry. My video is.
There you are. Hello.
Oh, nice. Okay, Mana's vision is a community where all people at all times have access to good food in welcoming spaces. President Albonas, and, and I want to thank you and all the members of the council for being such important champions of food, so food security. Public funding was vital to our ability to pivot and innovate, so that last year Mana shared more than £5 million pounds of food throughout the community and directly reached 45,210 neighbors, 16,900 of whom turned to us for the first time. I'm asking for your support of Mana as the food center of the future. The demand of justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion continue and sharpen, and Mana is asking for increased support in order to fulfill the obligation of our mission and realize our vision. When I came to Mana, I was recently unemployed due to COVID downsizing. I'm very proud to now be serving as a manager and leading our community engagement program uh, in partnership with eight trust community groups and 17 outreach workers to reduce barriers to access such as language and stigma. And as an immigrant speaking English as a second language, I know exactly what I'm talking about. Now that I have this position, I'm working directly with people in the community to overcome the obstacle I, I myself faced. With four local stores, we are responding to my participants' need in providing them with vouchers, which allows them to pick up necessary grocery items from select markets. Vouchers not only support economic growth of small businesses, but also give the power of choice to recipient household. Currently, the demand is greater than the number of vouchers our funding allows for. We are looking to the county to help us expand our work, and as proud member of nonprofit community, we encourage you to increase all contracts to 6% and pay close attention to Mana and allocate $1 million in support of our food bank contract as we all work to create a new, better normal where there is food for all. Thank you for, for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Hinok Mangisu. Hinok, you have two minutes to give your testimony and you may begin when you are ready.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lindsay. Uh, good evening, honorable members of the County Council. It's an honor to testify in front of you today. My name is Hinok Mangisu, and I live in the 2,500 block of Ross Road in Silver Spring. Just last year, I co-founded Ethiopian LLC, a company that aims to bridge information gap for the immigrant community in the county and its surroundings by providing timely information, news, and other opportunities in the language and the context that best fits the immigrant community. For most of us immigrants, life in the US is a complete turnaround. Some of the things that brought a culture shock to our community include the weather, which is unpredictable, and to the extreme, school closures, crime, and investigation reports, and traffic reports are a few examples. Furthermore, not all immigrants residing in the county are fluent in English. Therefore, even though there are plenty of opportunities in the county, unless they are communicated via the right tools and context, they will become obsolete. On the evening of March 31st, 2022, I was watching NBC4's Chief Meteorologist Doc Hammer on live television warning his family to take cover from a possible tornado. I immediately translated, contextualized, and shared the news on our social media platforms, explaining the gravity of the situation, and the response was huge. So many followers did not hear about it until we shared it. I want you to imagine what would have happened to this community if such disaster happens. For this and many other reasons that I cannot explain in two minutes, I suggest there should be support for disenfranchised communities and clustered multi-ethnic media and news companies to join the mainstream platforms. So today, I'm here to ask you to allocate a minute fraction of your resources to support our efforts in providing timely information, current news, and other opportunities in the language and the context the community relates, which in turn enables the community to thrive in the county and beyond. I thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have Allison Gillespie. I'm sorry, Allison, you have two minutes to give your testimony and you may begin when you are ready.
Good evening. I am a member of the Countywide Recreation and Parks Advisory Group, but tonight I represent myself as an individual park user. I'm a bike rider, a hiker, and a longtime nature center volunteer. Tonight, I would like to ask that you fully fund Montgomery Parks. Usership in our parks is at an all-time high. I worry that without full funding, the Parks Department will not be able to spend money on infrastructure needs. and the needs are intense. After two years of heavy use, our trails, our basketball courts and our ball fields are all in need of some CLC. And honestly, many of them needed it before the pandemic and were just even more hard used during that time. I think sometimes we get cavalier about our park system and we take it for granted, especially those of us that have been here for a long time, but we really shouldn't. The system we have is finer than most state park systems across the country. It's big, it's beautiful, and it's a major part of what makes Montgomery a fantastic community. It's also a free resource for a lot of our communities that have few other resources. Parks are the cornerstone to so many neighborhoods. They're the places people went most when they needed social time in a safe environment during the pandemic, and they were a place of respite when our homes felt a little too small and crowded during lockdown. Now that we are slowly hoping to return to some level of socializing, parks will continue to be a valued and loved space for many decades to come. Again, please do not cut or reduce funding for this beloved resource. Fully fund our parks, and thanks for being leaders who listen.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we have John Angel. John, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready.
Hello, hello, everyone. I'm John. Thanks for inviting me to this, to part this testimony. I am John Angel, business owner of Long Branch Business League. I'm an owner of Long Branch. I'm president of Long Branch Business League, and I live in Long Branch, so I'm very familiar with Long Branch, the community. I just want to say thanks a lot for the council, for the help you guys have given us to Long Branch with MHP, with the fundings we've gotten for the last few years. Really helped us with the marketing and a lot of the programs we've been doing, the activations of the parks and creating events for the community to come together. So, highly appreciate with that. You know, with the FY23 funding, it really will help us, especially with the, I know a lot of business owners in the neighborhood, and we definitely, they've been affected with COVID and the pandemic, with the COVID and the purple line also with the, a lot of the construction really has changed the way, but I know with the funding, that definitely will help a lot of the business. We continue with the marketing and try to conserve the main streets and the preserved main street pocket we were trying to create in Long Branch. So, anything that definitely, we highly appreciate what you guys are doing, and definitely we would like to hopefully get some of this funding to be able to continue the work we've been doing in Long Branch and help support some of the small business, definitely, which is the backbone of Montgomery County. And for me, from having been having small businesses since the 1990s, my family, I could tell you that any programs or any assistance that you guys can give to small business really helps a lot.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Up next, we have Kathleen Sammy. Kathleen, you have two minutes to give your testimony. You may begin when you are ready.
Yes, thank you. Hi, I'm Kathleen. I live in Silver Spring, near Sligo Creek. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I want to say that in two days, we're going to honor Earth Day, and today I'm asking you to make an honor towards Earth Day. And to do that, I'm asking you to fully fund and reinstate the Division of Environmental Planning within the Planning Department. This division once existed, but it was phased out over the last 12 years. It should have been strengthened and fortified. Its demise speaks to a failure of the Planning Department to prepare for the future. I believe we need a Division of Environmental Planning with a goal to preserve and protect our environment and to plan for climate change. I believe we need these environmental scientists making the planning decisions on where and how to reduce climate-related risks to residents, businesses and the natural environment. The new Division of Environmental Planning should have a chief and a team of experts, as they had in the past. They should be respected as the authority and report directly to youth council and to the county executive. Equity in the environment are defining issues of our times. Extreme heat and weather are the number one climate challenges we face. The Climate Action Plan is our strategic plan to cut greenhouse gas emissions 80% by 2027, which is just five years away. You have an action plan, but you do not currently have a planning division and team with the appropriate authority to implement it. Please back up this budget with a directive to the Planning Chair that the county executive council and citizens need an environmental division to meet the urgency of this moment. It's imperative for our environmental future. You don't have to change the budget. You only need to restructure, redistribute the funds, consolidate existing staff to create the new division. This could be a top priority for FY2023, which starts in July. The MMPC, the Planning Department mission is not only to manage physical growth and plan communities, but also to protect and steward natural resources. In that spirit, the Planning Department must have a Division of Environmental Planning to act as a gatekeeper and to protect and enhance our degraded natural environment. I think it would also take a lot of work off your desks, council members and executives. I think it would abate some of the problems you've seen with Thrive and some of the complaints you hear regularly from the community. And so I ask you to please consider reinstating this division. We once had it. We had it for 50 years. It was removed. I'm asking you to please put it back. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony, and that is all the speakers for the public hearing this evening. Council President Albonos, I'm going to toss it back to you to close us out. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lindsay, for facilitating. I was so impressed by so much of the testimony this evening. Everyone spoke so passionately about the issues that are of concern to them and their families and their organizations and their communities. We will continue the deliberation and discussion over the budget process over the next several weeks, and we'll have more public hearings tomorrow as well. Thank you all so much for testifying this evening, and great job to our Public Information Office team for facilitating tonight's dialogue. With that, tonight's public hearing is now closed, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. So, Erin Prangley, if you can go ahead, you have two minutes to give your testimony. You may begin when you are ready, and again, we will go back to the other two speakers after that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Erin Prangley, and I'm the softball administrator for Montgomery County Little League. MCLL supports the county's investment in recreational programs that promote gender equity and access to sports for girls and other underserved communities. In particular, I want to thank Councilman Hans Reimer for his leadership on this issue. MCLL supports Councilman Reimer's proposals to fund work on equity issues required by the upcoming Sports Commission. MCLL is a nonprofit youth baseball and softball organization. We've been in operation for 15 years, and our league will support 2,700 players this spring. The overwhelmingly growing number of players is coming from lower county, and we've doubled our softball participation in just one year. We expect similar growth. This is because we've made an effort to promote gender equity and through all our programming. Fifty years after Title IX required gender equity in extracurricular sports activities at federally funded schools, a February 2022 study by the Office of Legislative Oversight found Montgomery County parents and student athletes have observed examples of boys' sports being prioritized over girl's sports and local sports programs serving more males than females. Yet, girls, especially girls of color and those from low-income families, need these opportunities more now than ever. Girls and women who play sports have higher levels of confidence and self-esteem, lower levels of depression. High school girls who play sports are less likely to be involved in unintended pregnancies and more likely to get better grades in schools and more likely to graduate than those who don't play sports. This is a critical public health concern, and to provide more space for sports opportunities for our girls and all of our young athletes as soon as possible, the council must do more to address these gender equity issues. This includes fully funding Councilman Reimer's proposal for the Department of Recreation to develop and implement comprehensive strategy to advance local recreation-based sports programs, especially in underserved communities, and increase opportunities for girls, as well as any other work required by the upcoming Sports Commission. The council must also reject any delay of improvements to the Blair High School athletic fields. These renovations, softball field will dramatically increase opportunities for girls at this critical time when girls are literally being squeezed out of sports opportunities because of unequal access to recreational facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next is Lori Ulrich. Lori, you have two minutes to give your testimony, and you may begin when you are ready. Thank you.
Thank you for finding us. Good evening, county council members. My name is Lori Ulrich. I'm the president of AFSCME Local 2380, the staff union at Montgomery College. It has been a rough couple of years. No wage increases last year, an increase that leaves us all in the inflationary hole this year. Positions not filled, remaining employees filling gaps. Everyone is stretched thin. We have implemented fiscal discipline and incorporated savings strategies when asked by the county. We are straining to provide services to one of the most diverse community college populations in the country in multiple modalities simultaneously. Some people might think that Montgomery College is just a two-year institution, a place to fulfill gen ed requirements before transferring to a four-year institution. We are so much more than that. As an open enrollment community college, we accept everyone who applies, regardless of what neighborhood they're from, what school they attended or how they performed in it, and we meet them where they are. We serve those in need of developmental coursework as well as academic rock stars. We provide mentoring, coaching and career requisition. We assist non-traditional students with career changes, job skill development or re-entry to the world of academics when their paths may have bypassed it the first time around. The members of AFSCME strongly hope that the county council remembers Montgomery College's cost-saving efforts if and when it comes time to ask again. The non-instructional bargaining members are like the workers at one of Disney's parks. You can't see them, but without them, the rides stop and the attractions close. Without this bargaining unit, the college heat and cooling shut down. Lecture rooms and offices become dirty and rundown. Technical services cease to exist. Academic and administrative support functions come to a halt, and we cease to employ a significant number of Montgomery County residents. These hardworking employees are equal partners in student success with faculty in ways that many don't consider, and they deserve the pay increase that will come with the full funding of this Montgomery College budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. That is the last of our speakers, the president, for sure, this time. I'm going to go ahead and toss it back to you, just in case you had any more remarks.
No, I do not. Thank you all so much for testifying this evening. We apologize to the last two speakers, but we appreciate you sticking with us. We've certainly stuck with you, and we thank everybody for this evening. So with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.